may not align with long-range goals for the area as identified in the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan and Countywide Plan. The subject property and surrounding areas are part of the Pinellas County and City of Largo Target Employment Center overlay, which focuses on concentrated employment uses. The economic development element in the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan supports this goal by emphasizing the importance of clean industrial growth to enhance the local economy, increase tax revenues, and attract investment. While the City of Largo has not yet adopted the subcategories associated with the Pinellas County Target Employment Center classification, this property is located within the suburban industrial category, which is described by the countywide rules as an area that is intended to encourage a mix of industrial and commercial uses with an emphasis on industrial use preservation. As proposed, the FLUMA would expand the number of uses allowed by right on the site, increase the residential density from zero dwelling units an acre to 24 dwelling units an acre, and potentially create inconsistent development patterns. Ultimately, staff recommend denial of the proposed future land use map amendment, finding it inconsistent with some of the goals, objectives, and policies of the Largo Comprehensive Plan and Comprehensive Development Code, Pinellas Countywide Plan Rules, and Chapter 163 of the Florida State Statutes. This item is projected to be heard before the City Commission on October 1, 2024 at 6:00 PM, and should the City Commission approve, staff will transmit the Tier Two Amendment to Ford Pinellas for review. The presentation has concluded. The applicant is present and wishes to speak, and staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for staff? I have a few.
So it sounds like if we approve this against the staff's wishes, is it still going to go to City Commission and then Ford Pinellas?
That's correct.
And if we deny this, will it still go to the City Commission?
It will still go to City Commission, but the City Commission would ultimately have to approve, transmit it all to Ford Pinellas for countywide review.
Okay.
All right. So, and I get where the city is coming from, but I just want to confirm something. The property is currently zoned industrial limited.
That's correct.
So if the owner of the land was to tear down the lot, they would be able to build residential housing under the Live Local Act?
That is correct.
Okay. So whether it's industrial limited with nothing on the property, or whether we accept this FLUMA, we have a potential risk of residential density on that lot?
Yes.
Okay. And is staff's only rejection or request for denial of this is that they don't believe it's consistent with the city or county plans, or are there other objections?
Ultimately, yes, but it would create a spot zoning scenario as it is the only commercial general property within over a quarter. It would be the only commercial general property within over a quarter mile of the subject site. Pretty much all of the surrounding properties are industrial limited or employment in the county.
Okay. And is the staff aware, has the county allowed any other commercial general zoning against traditional industrial lands?
I can speak to that. It really depends on the area, so the location matters as well as what's around it. So there's been instances where industrial land has been converted from industrial, but it's really about access to the industrial land if it's feasible for certain, you know, trucks and things that need to go to the land. So it really is a case-by-case review by Ford Pinellas.
All right. And that's all the questions I have for staff.
We've approved conditional use of this shopping center a number of times, right?
There have been two conditional uses that have come before the board within the past year, year and a half or so. One was for a cava bar use that had a retail component, and then the other one was for a religious institution that I don't believe ever ended up establishing there.
Yeah, I remember that.
Actually, I just have one, and this might be a better question for Mr. Pressman, so let me know if that's the case. Do we know if the owner at the time of annexation agreed to annexation into the City of Largo?
Yes, it was a voluntary annexation, and they were well aware that the future land use map classification would be industrial limited.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Is the applicant present, wish to speak, Mr. Pressman?
No.
Were you sworn in earlier?
No, I was not.
Oh. Ms. Jarvis, can you swear a minute?
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Todd Pressman. My address is 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg. I do have a PowerPoint for you, if I could share that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. This is FLUMA 2024-002. Appreciate Whitney's report, and this is very in-depth. There's a lot in that report. I'm going to report some things to you that maybe that were not spoken about in the staff report that I think will be eye-opening for you. You're well aware of the location, 3.37 acres on Starkey Road, south of Wilmington Road. You see the site here. Whitney did a good job bringing up the speed on that. This is the site under the property praiser. Now, premise-wise, this site was entered in the city in 1999. Our contention first is that we believe it was inappropriately assigned the IL by either misjudgment or incorrectly. That's a matter of opinion and perspective. Secondly, the primary purpose and premise it was assigned to IL was revoked by the city after the annexation. And third, the area surrounding the site is not IL by actual uses or really the comp plan categories. Now, one of the pre-annexation, this before annexation, the site was developed in '85, and it moved along just fine, no problems. It was classified as IL and a C3 county commercial wholesale, warehousing, industrial sport, and commercial uses, which allow for a commercial shopping center. Looks like a shopping center, displays itself as a shopping center. You saw the pictures, separate units under a walkway that people go from shop to shop. Now, the history at annexation is very interesting, because when you look at the 1998 mapping that staff has, three sides are county. They're not city. They're county. To the east, to the west, and you can see the uses noted there across the street. You can see are commercial, and a shopping center is noted to the south. Those are the uses at that time. They were more commercial-oriented uses than they were industrial limited. Now, when you look through the staff report in 1998, again, we're talking about the time when this came in, what was the report of the land use category, commercial general? What was the existing use, commercial, retail, shopping center? The existing county zoning, C3, commercial, that's from the staff report in 1998, and that's in your staff report today. Nothing about industrial, all commercial, retail. Again, 1998 report, and this is important. Other considerations in the staff report, the existing use of the subject property is neither permitted use in the C3 zoning district nor under the city land use plan designation of IL. The staff report said it did not meet either, either. And critically, at the annexation time, the city's statement is that the city intends to recognize the property with a grandfathered C3 zoning. Board members, this is an important finding and statement. They were going to grandfather it C3, so the shopping center in entirety could continue as a retail use because they recognize it as a retail use, and they did not want to impair the retail use. They intend to recognize it as C3, nonconforming use, and will be treated in a similar fashion once annexed. This is an important finding, because when you look at your staff report today and Whitney's report, it says the current proprietor has provided a letter from the then Community Development Director. So the guy who was in charge to make these determinations is that it would be able to continue as a nonconforming use for indefinitely. That provided at least one tenant, only one tenant stayed retail, then he'd be fine. But what happened? The city welched on the deal. Now, that may sound harsh, and no one, I don't think intentionally did it, but the result of government and bureaucracy and land use books that are inches thick resulted after the annexation, and this is a quote from your staff report today, "After consulting with the city's legal term, it was confirmed that neither the annexation agreement nor the ordinance reflects that the existing CDC regulations concerning nonconforming uses must be enforced." So when they came into the city, the city dealt the cards. You can stay nonconforming. We know you're C3. We know you're retail. We know you're not industrial. That's what the report said. Yet, after the annexation, they changed it and said, "No, you're not nonconforming anymore." Drastic change to the proprietor and to the use. Let's switch gears. Today's surrounding future land use categories. Now, again, when you look at the site, three sides are not controlled by the city. They're controlled by the county. And those are E, employment categories under the county. And what is E prescribed? E provides, the first item is retail commercial. This is from the future land use category descriptions for Pinellas County. Retail commercial are permissible uses in the E, personal service, office support, commercial, again, commercial, business service, support. What are the surrounding uses? Now, we saw what those categories call for on three sides of the property, but what is really going on around the property? Well, you can see the subject site as an overview. To the north is auto service. Across the street is retail office service. Kitty corner is a gas station, C store. To the south is a retail strip center, and across the street from that is medical retail office. The area is commercial in use. It's continued in commercial use. We saw that from the 1998 report, that commercial was there. It's still there. Specifically, the gas station was there, and the shopping center was there. So to the east, which I showed you, is the retail and the gas. To the south is a very nice strip center. It does very well. Obviously, it's lasted through the decades, done very well. To the southeast is that medical and retail that I showed you. So, good questions from the board, because you're all aware that I've been here a number of times asking for conditional uses. And in fact, we had a third one that we submitted to the city. We've had three conditional use applications, two that have gone through, one that was settled within a year. So the property donor is faced with a site that is a square peg in a round hole and has had to backpedal and sideswipe and try and make this center exist the way it was brought into the city, nonconforming use, until they revoked it and redelved the cards. And we've tried to fix it and bandage it, and you've only seen a part of it, because many people come to the center, want to rent, and they don't want to wait four or five months or three or four months for a conditional use. They just go on to the next center. It's made the situation not work. It's a perfect storm of government. The city's statement is that the city intends to recognize the property with a grandfathered C3 zoning. Board members, this is an important finding and statement. They were going to grandfather it C3 and said, "No, you're not nonconforming anymore." Drastic change to the proprietor and to the use. Let's switch gears. Today's surrounding future land use categories. Specifically, the gas station was there, and the shopping center was there. So to the east, which I showed you, is the retail and the gas. To the south is a very nice strip center. It does very well. Obviously, it's lasted through the decades, done very well. To the southeast is that medical and retail that I showed you. So, good questions from the board, because you're all aware that I've been here a number of times asking for conditional uses. And in fact, we had a third one that we submitted to the city. We've had three conditional use applications, two that have gone through, one that was settled within a year. So the property donor is faced with a site that is a square peg in a round hole and has had to backpedal and sideswipe and try and make this center exist the way it was brought into the city, nonconforming use, until they revoked it and redelved the cards. And we've tried to fix it and bandage it, and you've only seen a part of it, because many people come to the center, want to rent, and they don't want to wait four or five months or three or four months for a conditional use. They just go on to the next center. It doesn't work. It's made the situation not work. It's a perfect storm of government, bureaucracy, and a ton of rules. So when you look at the City of Largo, the IL category, what is the main first determinant that says the site should be? It said should encourage industrial park arrangements. Well, this site is not big enough for an industrial park. It's three acres. It doesn't apply to an industrial park. Industrial park requires multiple dozens of acres. Surrounded by arterial highway, the site only sits on a minor arterial. Under the city roadway map, it's only a minor, I'm sorry, it's a minor arterial. On the south is a minor collector, local major. Also notes that the sites for IL should have large-scale indoor manufacturing, processing, warehousing, bulk sales, distribution. There's been no interest that has come to this center over the decades, as the proprietor has told me, for those uses. Looking at, again, at forwarding our future City of Largo, commercial general, the category, classification is generally appropriate to locations adjacent to activity centers where surrounding uses support and are compatible with intensive commercial uses. Well, I've shown you that virtually all the uses surrounding are commercial, just by fact of the photos that I've showed you. So we believe it is consistent. We believe that is clearly consistent, both by the E of the county surrounding on three sides, which I showed you, is specifically number one for commercial, and mentioned again, secondly, as commercial. And CG is in proximity to and good access to major transportation facilities, including mass transit. There are seven, as pointed out by the staff, there are seven bus stops located on that roadway, or nine, as they've indicated. So coming back to our premise, we do feel that was inappropriately assigned IL by either misjudgment or just incorrect, and maybe it was a propensity of the City of Largo that does like to annex. That's not a negative, but Largo is a city that does seek to annex when they can, much more than others. Secondly, the primary premise and purpose was that it was assigned to IL was revoked by the city after annexation, which I've showed you by quoting the staff report is correct. And third, the area surrounding the site is not IL by actual use, by comp plan categories. But by that criteria that I showed you, we believe that we are compatible by definitions that were presented. Last note in regard to the county, because the county is kind of a shadow on all this going on. My suggestion to you is you are the City of Largo. You do what the City of Largo thinks is best. I would not have the county prescribing or pressuring, not that they're pressuring, perhaps that's too strong a word, I would not have the county's shadow part of your decision. It should be you as board members, who we are hoping, and which is your position, to and can rise above the bureaucracy and the perfect storm of government, and make this viable, and fix the mistake or error or misjudgment that occurred. So with that, we appreciate your attention and happy to answer the questions you might have.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Pressman?
So what is the current facility being used as of today?
It's struggling, and I do mean struggling, to be a commercial shopping center.
Are there any tenants occupying the?
There are some tenants, yes.
Okay. And if this reclassification were to be granted, what is the intention of the owner to, what is the owner's intention if this reclassification was provided?
It would be able to run a shopping center like any other shopping center owner and not have to pick and choose between a laborth of rules, regulations, and circuitous ways to have to try and make things work which aren't working.
Got it.
Anyone else have any questions? Trying to, had a question for you, just left my mind.
Happens to me all day long.
But, so, and I just want to make sure that I understand from staff's point, their main thing is consistency, and you're disagreeing with that based on nonconforming uses within that industrial limited area.
Well, I think it's worded that. I think clearly the definition of IL that I showed you does not comply to this small site on two accounts, size and use. And also that the surrounding three sides of E clearly include commercial uses. That is spelled out for you from the land use or comp plan. So it's both by the plans and by use.
Absolutely. And I know you've been in front of us multiple times, and you've mentioned the struggles with this location. Is there, and I'm just speaking hypothetically, if there's not an answer, there's not an answer. If this doesn't pass, do you have any idea what the owner's plans would be for the site?
No. Our direction at this point is to try and get this approved. Mr. Relin was supposed to be here, but I told him there were a number of cases beforehand, and he is trying to get here. But his interest has been as, Dave, do you want to answer that question, Dave?
Does need to be sworn in.
This is not quasi-conditional.
Yes.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, per example.
And then she can just give your name and address.
Daisy Relin, 4201 Deepwater Land, Tampa, Florida. A real simple situation just happened. I had a bedding store approach me, and I said, "It's not permissible. I have to go get a conditional use." So we signed the lease consistent on getting the conditional use approved, and Todd's been able to get them approved every time, but we have to go through the process. So the paperwork got turned in, and the city came back like three weeks later and said, "Hey, great news. Don't worry about it. You don't have to do it for this one, because there was a locksmith there before. And since there was a locksmith there before, now we're saying that this is consistent, because we're going to treat a locksmith as retail before." So it's almost by unit now. It's not the overall site that these rules are being applied to. It's by, literally by unit. So I went back to this tenant and said, "Hey, good news. You can come in and get your occupational license right away and open." One other example is I have a hobby shop now, a big hobby shop for 4,000 square foot. And I said, "Hey, guys, you know, they've all been typically approved, but it's going to take two or three months." To answer your other question of, "I don't have a plan," you know, I mean, right now we're trying to, we own shopping centers in Pinellas County. I bought this shopping center based on a letter that got issued by the municipality, which I'm sure you guys have seen. It's extremely wordy, and, you know, the city said they weren't going to honor the letter. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board for the applicant? If not, at this time, I'll go ahead and start the public hearing portion of this case of the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
We have two potential cards, though. I'm not sure they're still here. First, we have Chris Flanders.
Hi. Good morning.
Do you wish, yep, please, come on up.
Hi. How are you? Good. I'm the cava bar owner, and just from running that, I've been running for the first two years. It's a very social place. It's a communal environment, and it feels like it should be a shopping center. It feels like it's kind of dead, and there's something that needs to be lifted off of it. It has so much parking for social things, you know, with no anxiety. That's why I chose the location to operate there was largely just because it's got such great parking, and it feels like it should be a fun place where there's multiple businesses working in synergy to create a fun place to go and explore. It does feel like there's like something that needs to be lifted off so that there isn't so much of a runaround to try to get fun establishments in there. Personally, not just because I have a shop in there, it doesn't feel like it should just be industrial behind-the-scenes stuff. It's a very beautiful plaza and, you know, tons of parking, everything. So, yeah, I mean, as a business owner there, I would love to be able to have other businesses pop up in there that are synergistic with my business and allow the public to come and make it a fun experience, like the restaurant. It should be a cool restaurant, you know, a Thai restaurant or a 24-hour diner or something. But in general, it just feels like there is, it should be clear to where more commercial businesses could be in there, in my opinion. Because it hurts me, it feels kind of dead in there, you know? If there was other businesses that were extroverted, like a restaurant or wherever, then people are going to walk by and say, "Hey, what's this cool magic, you know, cava lounge in there?" And so it would help me, too. That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll give back to you after public comment. Any other public comments?
Mr. Deselet, did you want to speak?
My name is Chris Deseletz. I just would like to make you think like, think what would be better for the prosperity of that land? Because if that land prospered, it means better, more taxes to the city. So what would be the best way for that land to prosper? I know that like commercial mall usually struggle when there's too much of the same thing. So we need to think maybe mixed use, connecting the street, or connecting the neighborhood behind, just things like that.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion to allow for further discussion from the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny FLUMA.
I do have some discussion.
Oh, you do have some? Sorry.
So, for me, I just want to make it clear, I do believe this site is compatible with our comprehensive plan. Looking through everything, I, this building has been there, I went to Southern Oak Elementary, which is right next door to this plaza. It has been there as long as I have been alive. And I do not see massive industrial use cases in that area. I mean, there's a car, junk car lot type thing. Like they said, there's the gas station, there's another retail strip center. So I don't necessarily think that this is not compatible with our comprehensive plan or the county's comprehensive plan. And I'll leave it up to the county to decide what they believe is in, consistent with their plan or not.
Can I actually touch on one of the points that you made?
Yeah.
So I think it's important to keep in mind that we're planning for the future uses of this area, and the, Pinellas County has conducted a study for the Target Employment Industrial Land Study, and I know that you guys have received presentations on that in the and I know that you guys have received presentations on that in the past. But it is really kind of geared towards preserving these industrial lands to be developed or redeveloped as employment uses, to increase jobs in the community. And this structure was built in 1985, so it is almost 39 years old. So, it would be a decent candidate for redevelopment. And I do understand that the property owner is in, you know, kind of a unique position. And like I mentioned in my presentation, the existing use of the site as a freestanding retail use is not in conflict with the Comprehensive Development Code. We do need to evaluate the uses that go into the plaza on an individual basis, because the impact of, say, a large church might have a different impact than an office. And so, that is kind of why the Comprehensive Development Code has been developed in this way. So, I just want you to kind of keep that in mind, too, that it's just important to plan for the future uses of the site in the area.
Absolutely. Now, and actually, you just made me think of a question. And correct me if I'm wrong, earlier in the presentation, you said if we were to grant this, it would by right allow 22 dwelling units.
24 dwelling units an acre.
Okay. If, let's say hypothetically, and you might not have this answer, I'm just thinking of it in my head. Let's say hypothetically, we get redevelopment. That building, that plaza gets torn down, and someone buys it under the Live Local Act. What kind of, if they were to follow the 80-120 thresholds under the Live Local Act, what's the density they could build on that lot?
The maximum density that they could build is 30 dwelling units an acre. And because of the site's area of 3.37 acres, they could develop 101 dwelling units.
Okay. So, if this was to come down, we could be talking about an additional, up to 101 units at that site under the Live Local Act potentially, if they can't make this a viable economic success at the shopping center under its current status?
Yes.
Okay.
That could potentially happen, yes.
That's all the questions, comments I have. I don't know, anyone else has any other comments?
Well, my only comment is, I understand that if we change the plan down the road, that these things can occur, but they still have to come before us. If any changes... If they were to demolish that shopping center, to reapply for something, for 101 units, they'd still have to come before us?
No.
No, they would not.
No. So, under the Live Local Act, it's the state legislation. They preempt the local municipality from, like, en sealing any regulations on the density, and it is a fully administrative process.
So then, we approve it, it gets done, they can go and make the changes, and there's no, we can't, there's nothing we can do? Well, I mean, as far as the changes?
Under current law.
Under current law.
Under the current law, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, under current law. Because I'm looking at it from his perspective, the current owner's perspective, of trying to... He has a plaza, he's trying to have quality occupants, and, you know, because he's got to pay for the land, he's got to pay for the buildings and maintenance of the buildings as well, under the current circumstances. So, I understand his situation. So, that's why I'm like torn between.
Yes. And one kind of alternative to changing the future land use map classification, there was a case a couple months ago for another industrial limited property in which multiple tenant spaces in a similar kind of plaza wanted to be approved for retail. And we were able to, like, process that as like a batch conditional use. The only thing with that is that those tenant spaces would have to be, like, approved just for retail, or they could go to an allowable use. But anything else that would be conditionally required, or just not allowed, would still have to go by the regular Comprehensive Development Code.
And, just to clarify, and correct me if I read this wrong, but like a restaurant, is that allowed under the current code at the site?
A restaurant is allowable as an ancillary use, an industrial limited. So, in order for a restaurant to be on the site, it would have to be kind of accessory to, or accessory, to the primary use. So, if a microbrewery or micro-distillery wanted to come in, and they wanted to have a restaurant component, they could do something like that.
Without conditional use?
That's correct.
Mr. President?
I think it's very interesting what Whitney just said, and was in her report to you, is that some retail uses are permitted here. Yet, we're asking to have retail uses. So, it's a little bit of a catch-22. And it's not really hypocritical, I don't mean that negatively in the least. But we're saying that some retail uses can be there. We have difficulty getting all the resident retail uses. So, when we talk about compatibility, when we talk about compatibility, that element is already there, which is already, as I've shown you, is the main premise of the E category anyway that surrounds us. I think that was an important point. And I just want to remind this board that you've only seen the tip of the iceberg that we have to come through for these CUs. We lose tenants every, not every day, but on a regular basis. So, we need your help. We're here basically to need your help on what we believe is a supportable case. I won't take any more time, thank you.
Before, if there's any more discussion, I do want to remind the board again of our quorum. So, at three, one vote is needed to pass anything. So, a 2-2 vote would fail on the floor. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to deny Flume 24-002, ordinance number 2024-44.
Is there a second? Hearing no second. The motion dies on the floor. I'll entertain a second motion.
I move to approve Flume 24-002.
Is there a second?
I motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Eifert, and a second by Mr. Serrano. Can, Mr. Arvis, can you poll the board?
Yes. Mr. Serrano?
I approve, yes.
Mr. Eifert?
Yes.
Ms. Donardi?
No.
Vice Chair Faustini?
Motion passes, three to one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board.
Thank you.